Good evening, welcome to the Board of Supervisors' special meeting for June 29th, 2020. And first order of business is the call to order and the pledge of allegiance of the United States of America. If we please, long standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the reconsideration of the proposed management and lease agreement with Virginia Golf for the Front Row Golf Club. Mr. Stanley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Back in June 2017, Warren County issued a request for a proposal, RFP, seeking proposals from qualified individuals or businesses to lease and manage the Front Row Golf Club located at 902 Country Club Road in Front Row, Virginia. The county has owned and operated the club since 2005, and while the club has significant historical value and beauty, it is operating at a financial loss. Since the time the original RFP was issued, the county has released five additional RFPs in an effort to find an individual business that has both management experience and financial capabilities to take over the course operations, preserving the club while reducing the cost of the county. The most recent RFP that was issued in April of 2020 resulted in submitting one proposal from VA Golf LLC. The VA Golf LLC proposal outlined a variety of options to improve the course and grow the game of golf for the entire community. A special meeting on June 23rd, the Board of Supervisors held a public hearing on the request and voted to deny the request by a vote of four to one. Mr. Carter dissenting. VA Golf LLC subsequently revised their proposal via, I guess via two emails from their principal, and revised it to include proposal to lease the club for a term of three years with three renewals at the leasing option for a total of 12 years, that the leasing paid Warren County $2,000 per month for the first year and $1,000 per month and 5% of the profits for each succeeding year that the agreement is in effect. Due to the timing of the potential closing of the facility on July 1st, the chairman requested a special meeting be called for tonight to reconsider the proposed management lease agreement. The terms, again, the proposed lease management agreement include that, the language again, about the $2,000 per month for the first year and $1,000 per month and 5% of the profits. The first year's payments will offset the county's fifth and final lease year with Horizon Golf on the golf cart leases. If the county were to close the facility on July 1st, you had their table presented at the last meeting, staff indicated an estimated end of costs of about $38,000 for basic maintenance, including electricity and heat of the golf clubhouse. That was total gross costs and did not include any revenue for voting memberships or things we call rental. At the end of the initial, again, three-year term, VA Golf LLC will have the opportunity to renew for additional, three additional three-year terms. There is several motions in your packet, including the first one which was drafted by Mr. Hamm for the board's consideration, and Mr. Louis Nichols is here as a co-owner and Mr. Ray Nash representing VA Golf LLC. Louis, did I miss anything? Anything else?
Oh, well, no, just thanks for having us back. We much appreciate you doing this and indulging us again. Ray, just say that real quick in case there are any questions, but Ray Nash, my business partner, we did get some more signatures, so in addition to Mr. Chairman, in addition to the ones that we turned in tonight, we did last Tuesday, we got 20, I'm sorry, 16 plus, 22 more, just, that was really basic Sunday, and I'm going to present these to you as well. To you and to you. Thank you, sir. So we do have some additional signatures that makes 230 all told, and we appreciate your consideration of our revised offer and hope that it's to Mr. May's point, or Chairman May's point, that it represents more teeth and more in the skin of the game and meets all the inspections that we had prior, so that we have a problem and we're down to answering others.
Any comments, concerns at all?
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if I went through, I emailed the board earlier today and read some of the other things that would be in this motion if the board were to decide to do this?
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to skip over some of the ones that have already been mentioned, the fact that Virginia Golf LLC is paying the county now. The agreement will terminate in the event that it is ruled Warren County does have title to the property. There is a lawsuit pending on that issue. I expect that the county will win that, but that's still out there, so this would need to obviously terminate in the event that was an adverse outcome. The Virginia Golf have asked for, and I've spoken with Virginia Golf LLC's attorney today, for some terms that are, in my opinion, not unreasonable. One of those is upon 60 days' notice, if the golf course operation fails to provide a profit in any three-month period, that the Virginia Golf LLC can terminate the lease. They don't have to, but they can, and given the golf course's history that probably operates as an ability for them to terminate the lease. Hopefully not, but possibly quite often, but that is the term that they want. Another term is, which would allow them to terminate, is if any member of the LLC becomes disabled, which is a reasonable term, since there are two members of the LLC that are expected to work full-time on this, or a force majeure event occurs that interferes with the operation of the golf club, so tornado, riot, war, some disaster, natural or man-made that would make it impossible or substantially interfere with their ability to run the golf club. It also provides that the county will continue to provide insurance, or they've asked that the county continue to insure the property, and if permitted by the county's insurance company named Virginia Golf LLC as an additional insurer. I think we've heard back that the county's insurer will agree to provide them as an additional insurer. There was no mention that there would be an additional cost from that from our insurance company. I would have hoped she would have told us that if there was going to be one. So, and of course, the county is going to lease this, or if it enters into this agreement, will lease this property and will still own it, so you lease your house to somebody, certainly you want to have insurance on the house. There is a provision, there is a current golf cart lease that has no cancellation provision whatsoever. Because we are county, and a county cannot issue debt or any debt that we issue is subject to appropriation, there is language in the lease allowing us to effectively get out of the lease at the end of the next physical year, which will be July 1st of 2021. And so the county, if it enters into this agreement with Virginia Golf LLC, or if it doesn't, will still have to pay that golf cart lease, and that's slightly more than $20,000 over the course of the year. And since we're going to have to pay anyway, Virginia Golf LLC has asked that they be allowed to use the carts, and that's part of this motion as well. There is also a provision, this will contain such other terms as may be agreed by the county administrator in consultation with the county attorney. Probably going to be about 15 pages worth of legal leaves that have to do with leasing of property and the management agreement, clarifying insurance issues, liability issues, notices, what happens if they're still on property when their lease expires, various other things that you would see in a lease or in any other contract. I have started drafting that, but I have not completed it, and I was telling Mrs. Carter before this meeting, in preparation for the prior proposal for due direction, I had spent a lot of time in taxpayer dollars, drafting agreements, et cetera, that didn't ultimately pass, so here I had not done that, which is why we need to have that provision in the motion, because I don't have a finalized lease or management agreement for the board to consider tonight. And however, we have put in the core terms of that agreement in the motion, which would allow, if it's the pleasure of the board, the county administrator, to sign those two agreements. So again, it's perfectly appropriate to do it either way. In a perfect world, you have an agreement, you can see every little fine print, but then of course, if you don't want to do the agreement, they draft it for nothing. Here, we don't have that, and my understanding is that July 1st comes around on Wednesday, and if this is going to happen, it needs to happen soon. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Do you feel comfortable that you'll be able to generate a lease that we can look at tomorrow? I mean, personally, I would like to see it, just because we need to at least read it and give Mr. Stanley the ability to sign it.
I could do that. That is going to be a, I can do, I can give you tonight, I only have one of them with me, a draft that will have to say that it won't be complete of the management agreement, and I could send you all the lease tomorrow. Since they're supposed to be on the ground and doing this on Wednesday, and I've got to draft an agreement that hasn't been drafted yet, and get their attorney to look at it, bless it, and go back and forth, it won't be until late today and before that happens, but I could certainly send the board the agreement, but if individual board members have comments, we can have a meeting about whether or not we want to bless the agreement because we wanted to notice that.
Well, before we leave here, we want to be able to have an agreement that can be signed. I mean, everybody sitting here is deciding tonight whether they want to go with this or not. I'd just like to see it. I'm happy to look at it at 5:30 or 6:00 or 7:00 or 8:00 tomorrow night, because I want to make sure that everything that we talk about is there.
Well, we can provide, Mr. Chairman, that you sign the agreement, and you can have the final message over tomorrow if you would like.
I don't have any problem with that.
I mean, that would be the easiest way, you sign it instead of Mr. Stanley, and you know, we'll have the motion say that the agreement contains such terms as may be agreed to by the chairman of the Board of Supervisors in consultation with the county attorney. And I will provide you what would be a, hopefully, final agreement tomorrow, and actually, I'll give you a draft as I send it out to the other side.
That works for me. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have a problem with that?
Mr. Hamm, if I'm going to rent a property or lease a property, then I expect my landlord to take care of the well pump and the other aspects of that property. Is that still the case in this arrangement, or is that going to be up to VA Golf LLC to take care of the property, the buildings, HVAC system? So what will the lease look like with that respect?
Well, that, we were talking about that in the car on the way up, and you know, I, those details are not that I're about, and again, it was Friday afternoon that there was a possibility that it would be today, so I have not done that yet. I think it's probably fair to talk to the Virginia Golf LLC folks for them to answer those questions. My thought would be that there would be some type of commercially standard lease arrangement whereby it would be similar to a landlord renting a property, so yes, if the air conditioner breaks, landlord roofits and other minor maintenance things, however they were defined in the agreement, would be the tenant's responsibility, but, and certainly, you know, it's for the board to decide if you want to do this or not. I will say that it's county property, and it's got to be maintained if it's leased or if it is not leased, and obviously, if leased, it's a used war, and so maybe that will increase the cost of that maintenance, and otherwise, I would refer to what they might have to say about that.
And I think you articulated that extremely well, because the spirit of what we're trying to do here is, again, it's fiscal responsibility, as we said in the two days on Friday afternoon. So to, you know, I think the simplest way to put it, like anything that would be in range, just jump in if this is not what you're thinking. So I think the simplest way to probably put it would be, you know, I think what the board is concerned about is anything that is costing them extra because it's a golf course, right? So to the county attorney's point, you know, there's certain things that have to be maintained anyway, because you're going to do something, you know, you can't just let a building sit or it's going to go, you know, it's just not going to be usable anymore. So clearly, yes, you know, if you're renting an apartment, or the example I used with Mr. Hamm today, like he was up on 81 and come on up here was, you know, I know he's in a really old locker room, they probably own their building, but let's just say he didn't own his building, and they were leasing a building in downtown Harrisonburg. You know, if the AC went out in that building, you know, if they're leasing the building, yeah, things like that would be covered by, you know, the person you're leasing from. Now, I think the spirit of what we're trying to say here is, yeah, but we don't have to have a golf course, so anything above that, above and beyond that, and I think that's to your point about the well pump, yeah, I mean, is that something, what's your goal on that, right? Is that something that we would have to just take on because they would have to, they have that E-way down there? This is my question. Okay, okay, so Ray's going to take it on?
Yeah.
The goal, if my understanding is correct, and I'm the one that actually said it, it got coined everywhere, is the skin in the game thing?
Yeah.
And not to have the county, but adding more dollars than is absolutely necessary, and for VA Golf LLC to come in with the best deal that they could.
Correct.
And it sounds like that we've got that, and I know that there's some pain in that for y'all, but we don't have too many choices here. It's do it or don't do it at all, and we're here to make that decision. So.
Correct.
Do we have other questions or concerns? Archie, are you okay?
Well, I have a little bit of a problem with the proposed motion. I would make a little change to that if possible, if we come to that.
Can I tell you what it is?
I think that would be probably productive.
Sure.
Yes, please. We're the board says that we would pay $1,000 per month.
No, they pay us $1,000 a month.
Fifteen, the first year is $2,000 per month for the first year, then $1,000 per month for every other year. What I would suggest, what I would propose that would change that is to $1,500 per month if they're after rather than $1,000.
I think the $2,000 a month first year is to cover the cart fee, and then the $1,000 a month, which I think is kind of reasonable, because they don't know what you're getting into, and the thing of it is, that's still going to be more money than we would be able to collect as far as the tax assessed value, because right now, when I figured it out last time, it'd be roughly $10,000 a year. So in this case, you're running to get $10,000, and if you get too much there, it may just go off and we don't get anything. So I'm okay with the way it is.
Well, I'm not really comfortable with saying 5% of the profits, but whatever they make in profit, I wouldn't care about it. I'd just rather see something already a co-upfront resident looking at whatever profits they make and attach anything to the profits. I think it's very unusual to do something like this.
May I say something, sir?
Do what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 sir. Yes, sir. Okay. I think we've come here with nothing but goodwill, and I think it's, I think the county, you know, we're trying to set you up for success, and I think in return, the county, they don't know the same thing, but I think the county would want to set us up for success as well. And I think they're coming from a standpoint of losing money to a standpoint of gaining 12 rand per year, $12,000 per year hard cash, hard dollars, every year, beliefs. So you're coming, sir, and I respect your point, and negotiation is good. That being said, I think fairness is good, too, and we've stepped up, I think, in a very big way to expose ourselves even more, put even more money into this, and it truly is a labor of love. Well, we might not want to say this, but he can make twice as much as we make out of front row, that's weak. He's had to do the hard job explaining to his wife that he doesn't want to do that. He wants to be with us, I don't know why, and I'm just grateful, but as I said, it was an honest story for me if Ray didn't want to depart us. So I think we've come to you with goodwill. I think in turn, we would hope that the county would show us the same good faith and set us up for success as much as they can, while still being fiscally responsible.
The other thing, too, that, you know, besides what they would pay in a lease fee, they would also be responsible repo, mule tax, sales tax, possibly personal property and things like that in addition to that. So I think, hopefully, they're successful and we get more than $1,000 plus a 5% interest, and this kind of gives them incentive to do well, and it helps us so along, and that could increase as far as the profits, hopefully does, but I feel the other side of it, too, I think there's other taxes involved that we would be able to get that we're not getting now. Eh, take it back. We are getting the mule tax and the probably sales tax out there.
Well, I have some rentals myself, and if I was to put, I have a set price per month, I'd feel awfully awkward telling the landlord, the leasing, hey, this is the monthly rate, and then I want 2% of your income every month, so that's the part I'm not comfortable with.
Wait, you know, thank you. May I say something?
Yes, sir.
I recognize, well, thank you, and if you want to strike that, that's fine, you know, that's actually more favorable to us. It was just another gesture of goodwill. I mean, we just thought we needed to do something that would really send a message, you know, on Friday, which is why we put it all out there. I mean, just a real quick visual, this is what we had asked for. I mean, literally, I'm with my attorney on the phone, and I had to explain to him as he was coming from one case to my case, that we crossed through all this and we're fine on it. And then this is what, oh, we're asking to stay in there, which is just the legal lease that Jim put in there, Jim Downey put in there, which is just basically a standard, you know, which I think we're all on the same page about.
No, but we struck those two things, and you made us three. It's right, right? The indemnification can't be mutual because you're a county, number one, and number two, we struck the gross sales tax receipt provision, because we need to pay gross sales tax, because clearly, you know, there's going to be a business license fee that we have to pay. I mean, it's not huge money, but it's something, you know, for the county, so.
I am mindful of what happens in the future, too, and, you know, it's for the board to decide if they want to do this, and if so, at what rate, but having the county, you know, get 5% of profits and have to look at documentation and verify that, I mean, if you're saying that the $1,500 per month afterwards is revenue mutual from your standpoint, or you're happy to do that, that would certainly make everybody's life simpler.
We're more comfortable with $1,000 a month and 5% of profits, to be perfectly honest with you. I think that's fair. I think you're coming from a net loss of, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you, but I mean, we haven't seen, you haven't seen a sucker, but you're coming from a net loss to a net gain of 12 rand a year for sure. I mean, I would think that.
Well, you want to, you want to talk to the [inaudible].
Sorry, I'm sorry. As I said, you're coming from a net loss to a net gain.
Can I get the point, try and.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm talking to a person, but, you know, and I think it's fair. I mean, I think, you know, I'm not trying to gouge anybody, and I know you don't want to gouge me, you're all really good people, but I think that's fair, and let's leave the 5% in, you know, we definitely, we all win, we do make a profit, you know, it's, you know, and we get more, you know, the county gets more, but for sure, the county gets from an unknown to, gosh, for sure, we, well, not even, nothing's ever for sure, but they've some 12 years, we're going to lose money to, these people are coming in with a deal, they're going to do horticulture, once the horticulture turns out there, how to, I would partner with their historical stuff, well, this is kind of surprising to you, but I want to do a garden down there, I want to do a community garden down there. I mean, you're really big, I feed the kids, and we have a chef that's really big on it that I think we might be working with. So there are a number of things that we, again, we wanted to be a partnership, this is not, great, if we come away making a couple paintings, we just don't want to do insurance by the way. That's really good, right?
I think the thing, too, is, now, Mr. Fox said he had rental units, so I assume that in the last 10 years, you've not raised the rent on any of those?
What's that now?
I said, I understand you have rental units, so I would assume the last 10 years, you've not raised the rent on any of those?
Yeah, oh, yes, we've raised the rent.
Oh, yes. So what I see, this is being somewhat of an inflation guard, too. Every year, that 5%, hopefully will increase, so that almost takes care of the future inflation, so that's what I think makes sense.
Well, I disagree, I don't like the 5%. I'd rather see that hard, hard number.
You do, okay, you do have a hard number. Anyway, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, do you want a motion?
I'm ready for a motion at the Board's End of the House.
I need the Board Supervisors to authorize the county administrator to enter into a lease, or should that be now?
I would, yes, it should be, thank you.
Okay. Authorize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to enter into a lease and management agreement, the agreement with Virginia, no, VA Golf LLC to lease and manage the Front Row Golf Course for a term of three years with three renewals at the leasing option for a total of 12 years, that leasing pay one county $2,000 a month for the first year, then $1,000 per month, and 5% of the profits for every succeeding year that the agreement is in effect, that the agreement will terminate in the event that it is ruled that one county does not have title to the property or at the leasing option upon 60 days' notice, if the golf course operations fail to provide a profit for any three-month period, any member of the LLC becomes disabled, or a force majeure event occurs that substantially interferes with the operation of the golf club, that the county continue to provide insurance for the property and if permitted by the county's insurance company named VA Golf LLC an additional insurer, that the county allow the LLC to use the golf carts provided in the existing golf cart lease agreement and not cancel that agreement until July 1st, 2021, and that the agreement contain other such terms as to be agreed upon by the Board Supervisor Chairman in consultation with the county attorney.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And any additional discussion?
I just wanted to point, and maybe it was in there or not, but I guess what the chairman was, kind of was before as far as seeing the final contract, it is, I know it's understood, but you get a, you kind of have the final say on that, if you're comfortable with it. He has, he signed it, is that correct? Or if he has some heartburn, he kind of goes somewhere else, is that what you were talking about before?
Yes, you know, and really, you know, we, those, the details normally where is to work things out, but there could be some thing that happens tomorrow where I don't agree with Mr. Downey, which is fairly unlikely, I've had two cases with him before, and he's a smart guy, but that could happen, and the whole thing falls off the rails, I don't expect it to, but yes, at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman May will be the one to sign this, and if he's satisfied with it, he signs it, and if he's not, he doesn't, and if he doesn't, then there is no agreement, and it could come back to the board or not, or whatever other action would occur. Would be my expectation that we would be able to work everything out tomorrow, because I think I've been through any of the potential deal luster with him.
And I'm okay with that, I just wanted to make sure that that was completely understood, what you'd said earlier.
It's understood.
Pretty good, thank you, sir. Emily, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Oats?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Flowers? Uh, Mr. Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. Can I get a motion for a chairman?
Sir, may I, we can recognize by the chair one more time?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to thank you, thank you very much for your graciousness, and I think we work together, I think we can all be proud that we worked through it together. One final request, it's not a sheet, we don't need it in writing, but I would love, next year, to keep your budget for a flag out there for us, for an American flag, a POW flag, and Warren County plenty flag, because, you know, the county scene is plenty, and we're coming, that's why it's making us do this budget, we're coming from a standpoint of, it's not scary, and that's always been what's made this county work, is we need to just help each other, come on this. from a standpoint of alignment, and it'll all work. So next year, if you can find me the hearts to budget for a flag out there for us, we would love to raise the colors every day, Virginia flag, POW flag, Warren County flag, American flag, thank you very much.
Well, I wish you the best of luck. Denying the first agreement that was put before us back a few months, it, you know, didn't bother me, because it just didn't feel right. It bothered me this last week, because I see your passion, and I sincerely am grateful that you came back with this, and I hope everybody gets memberships, because all those 208 people need to back you up.
They already had, you know, 12 of them came by Saturday. I'm setting it up right now, because they just might know, they're going to run, so, yeah, we have 12, like, we should have by March, so.
I wish you the best.
Well, thank you.
I put you on my prayer list, because you, you're, boy, you're taking on a huge task.
I know.
I appreciate you.
We know, we, no, we, we put ourselves on the prayer list every day, believe me, but I think it's a, I think it's an educatorism on our part, and the passion is everything, right? That'll carry the threat, the other passion, and the vision, and just the ability to execute on it, execute on these things, and I think that'll carry us, and we'll all be better off, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I say something else?
And I just want to echo what Ms. Colerons said, and then there again, because the majority voted against the original proposal last meeting, making it back, and I think it benefited the county tremendously, and it shows, in my opinion, fiscal responsibility in accepting this offer, which a lot better than the previous offer. And again, I wish VA Golf LLC success, and that only helps Front World Golf Club, but it also helps all the other golf courses, too, as far as raising everybody. And the other thing, too, is that, what I like about this is it'll preserve a gift that was given in the memory of the Carson family and their son. And this gift was given to all the citizens of Warren County to enjoy it for years and years and years to come, I hope. So that's all I have to say, and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Colerons? And Mr. May?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.